I call the meeting to order. At this time, we will have the roll call.
Here.
I will accept the motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Mrs. Blatigan made a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Brown, please say it. All those in favor, please raise your hand. The phone. It is passed. Okay, we would like to welcome all visitors this morning. If you're here for the first time, we're glad to see you. And if you are a returnee, we're glad to see you. So we hope that the information that you will receive this morning will be helpful in your endeavor in education of Henry County. At this time, Mrs. Blatigan is going to do the, well, I'm sorry, after the invocation, Mrs. Blatigan will lead the pledge of allegiance. If you would stand, we'll have a moment outside. Hey, there.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we have time for public comment. Let me make my remarks first, and then I will introduce our speaker. This is the time for public comment. That means we are here to listen to you, not to engage in a question-and-answer period or a debate. Upon arrival at the podium, please state your name, your subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you have agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board and its members, as well as the staff and students of Henry County. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Our speaker this morning is Mrs. Alex Willingham, and her subject is returning to school.
Good morning. Alex Willingham returned to school, and I look at her. Heather Bird asked me to speak with you today. I am the Virginia Education Association representative for Henry County. Our members, thank you for delaying in-person instruction, but we offer a few suggestions for your return-to-school plan. Please allow teachers to work from home if they request to do so. Many have discussed this option with their principals and their administrators stated that they would allow telework, but that stifling decision is not theirs to make. Staff members are working harder now than ever. This is a small consideration, given the fact that teacher workloads have increased tremendously. Their reasons for this request vary. Some feel unsafe in the school buildings because of positive COVID cases. Others do not want to bring the virus home to vulnerable family members. Some are second-guessing signings in the inventory COVID waiver for their children to attend school with them. Many are tired, stressed, and anxious. They have better internet at home and would save time commuting, time they could then devote to their students. Today, the only ones allowed to work remotely are those at serious risk with illness and/or being quarantined. Please keep in mind that COVID spikes occur after holiday weekend and Labor Day is fast approaching. Many people are planning to travel. And unlike Memorial Day and the Fourth of July, they will be returning to school buildings where infections have already occurred. Another concern involves managing virtual lessons and in-person instruction at the same time when students return. And when that occurs, students will not be required to wear masks. We must learn from what we know. Some adults are not wearing masks. I feel this very complaint in both Georgia County and Pennsylvania, and these regions have staff members testing positive for COVID at higher rates than anyone in my eight other areas. Why magnify the spread? Finally, at-risk employees currently teleworking, we're told that arrangement ends when in-person instruction resumes without a mask mandate. And with some returning to buildings that have already experienced infection, how will they keep safe? I have heard that we cannot live in fear, and we need to get back to our lives. But neither occurs when one becomes stuck with this virus. Those about to have experienced loss, whether from COVID or another deadly disease, know that it is not worth the risk. Please be certain that the decisions you make today do not become regret later. In summary, telework options, a mask mandate, remove work assignments for high-risk employees would all be greatly appreciated. And as always, HDA and VDA are very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to the awards and recognition and the award for Hispanic Heritage Month.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you know, we have several monthly recognitions throughout the course of the year. And this month, we have baked the whole recognition and attention with the Heritage Month. The Hispanic Heritage Month was first emerged in 1968 and officially designated in 1980. And I'd like to share the governor's revolutionary view of the importance of the Constitution. Whereas, Virginia is proud to be the fifth largest Hispanic and Latina population and brings the pride of over 800,000 Virginians of Hispanic or Latina descent. And whereas, Hispanic and Latina Virginians make up the nation's largest ethnic minority, they're reaching every community through their vibrant and diverse culture and heritage. And whereas, thousands of Hispanic and Latina businesses contribute to Virginia's economic growth and job creation throughout the Commonwealth. And whereas, Hispanic and Latina Virginians have overcome challenges and obstacles to persevere and prosper in the Commonwealth through their hard work and commitment. And whereas, Hispanic and Latina Virginians are included in 18.5% of the nation's total population and must be properly counted in the 2020 census. And whereas, Hispanic and Latina Virginians make significant contributions through their leadership and government, protecting freedoms as part of our military, helping feed our community through agriculture, inspiring children as educators, helping fight against the COVID-19 pandemic as healthcare professionals in advancing society with violence and technology. And whereas, stories of Hispanic and Latina men and women are worthy to fabric our communities and Hispanic and Latina history is Virginia's history. And whereas, in 2020, Hispanic and Latina Virginians continue to make rights for height in public office and civil rights issues, supporting the fight for justice and equality for all, and successfully advocated for the historic passage of in-state tuition and driver's privilege cards for all immigrants, regardless of citizenship status. And whereas, I encourage Virginians to participate in virtual and other states' celebrations. And whereas, the Commonwealth of Virginia will join with the rest of the country in celebrating the 52nd National Hispanic and Latina Heritage Month by commemorating essential contributions, sacrifices, and accomplishments that Hispanic and Latina people have made throughout the United States and throughout our nation's history. Now, therefore, I, Ralph S. North of the student by recognize September 15th through October 15th, 2020, as Hispanic and Latina Heritage Month in our Commonwealth of Virginia. And I call this observance the intention of all of our students. And our teachers will be working virtually with our students to recognize and discuss the importance of it throughout the course of the fall.
The next item on the agenda is the information agenda. And this is return to school update. Mrs. Strayer?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We are ending our fourth week of virtual instruction. 100% virtual learning has been viewed for our teachers and for our families. And I appreciate everyone's patience and flexibility as we accommodate ourselves to our current learning environment. I cannot say thank you enough to our board, our staff, parents, and community for continuing to work hard to support all of our students. We do have staff according to work each day, and staff members are available to meet with parents regarding needed questions. Additionally, we continue to have staff members who hope to work in order to prepare for the transition to hybrid instruction. Then, several staff members will share information in regards to enrollment, operation, instruction, technology, communication. So to get us started, Mr. David Scott will start us off with a session of enrollment.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As Mr. Strayer said, I don't do a bleed off here. That's all good information for you. And I'm going to try to read this off of my screen. I'm used to reading off of there. We'll make way to this. As far as enrollments, there are some undeniable truths that we have to acknowledge in terms of our enrollment. Enrollment is down compared to last year. After the first month, it's down about 100% compared to last year. Compared to the Department of Education projection for this year, we're at a question of 300 students. It's not unusual for our average state membership with an ADM to lag behind our membership count. Back last year, of the any change in membership in September, our ADM grew by 140 students in September and another 50 or so in October. It's not out of the question that our ADM will rebound as normally does when they fall. I do believe we will still fall short of the Department of Education projection of 6,138 students. But how much short is the difficult question to answer. I can tell you where we've lost students, or rather, where they've gone in general terms. Pretty much equal proportions. We've lost students out of state transfers, which means that it's relocated. We've lost a good portion to in-state public school transfers, with nearly equal amounts surrounding neighboring school divisions and equal amounts surrounding divisions farther away in the state. Somewhat thin slice of the pie is in order at non-divided schools, both religious and non-religious. And of course, we've had some family state homeschool options. Why these families are making these decisions is up before debate. We've been working to keep students enrolled. From the school level, our principals and teachers are calling families, visiting families, taking iPads and pagers to the front doors of houses, apartments, trailers to get students enrolled and participating in regular instruction. I know there are some who have painted pictures of students who are not participating. We know there are some who are not committing the time to the task. We have those students every year. But when we have had the opportunities to interact with these parents and students, put devices in their hands, and when they have allowed us to show them how online instruction works, we have been able to re-enroll students. Approximately 70 students have been re-enrolled since the end of the first week of school. From the division level, we'll continue to spread the word about the benefits of being enrolled and working with licensed teachers. We will be mailing homeschool families with detailed information about our online virtual offerings, which we believe offer more comprehensive educational experience to most homeschool programs, particularly in terms of counseling, academic support, and divisional needs. While our homeschool numbers have not outpaced our numbers from last year, we do believe that some families have chosen the option early this year before knowing how Henry County would return to school. As we continue to get better at our online delivery and eventually return to in-person instruction, I believe that many of these families will return to our division. We also plan to coordinate with social services to apply pressure to families who today receive cash benefits from the Temporary Assistance for Needed Families program and U V, our failing to demonstrate participation in online learning. After we have delivered iPads and pagers to these families and have eliminated the excuse that students cannot access the instruction, we have to be able to put some responsibility on the families for their not choosing to do the work. We are balancing our financial need to maintain enrollment and to get students re-enrolled with the true academic interest of students. It's difficult for some teachers and administrators to mark a student present when the student is making more effort. But when we have contacted a family and can keep a student enrolled, it's more than just the online instruction we can provide. We can help with accountable needs of students. We can provide meals to students. We can continue to be an institution that supports these families through these challenging times. Financially, we prepare a budget that can absorb some shortages and funding through the lowered enrollment. We're closely monitoring our monthly expenditures and show savings, a lot of the budget for substitutes, utilities, tour, and travel. We also expect credits from our insurance policy based on our experience for the past several months. We are going to be conservative and judicious in terms of the major capital outflow projects we have, because we know both the importance of these projects and the cost associated with it. It renders those projects ones we might have to put on hold while we see how enrollment continues to fluctuate. We also know that there are staffing implications, and we wanted to be very involved in number very closely and also class sizes in our middle and high school. And if there are places where that may result in not filling, they could see that maybe what we have to do in the short term. I'd also like to provide an update on our meals program. This is a little bit more extender, basically, the financial part of that. From our meals platform, we have delivered over, delivered and prepared over 27,000 meals during the month of August for families who are experiencing regular learning. We are making meals available by delivery on Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays, pickup now on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The student service program that we are under right now, because we have elected for virtual start, requires that we allow families to have choices of meals. This is, to be honest, a cause of confusion, a cause of chaos, and has made our, this part of our operation, a little bit clumsy at this point. We've had difficulty getting the right meals. Steep meals, we've had difficulty getting any meal to a student who's living out of rent. It's a shared work ground, and we have a seat for 10 senior elementary students, which, like, it's difficult to coordinate all those things in a special situation. However, over the passage of time, we're getting a lot better at that. We're giving meals rather than leaving elementary schools about 7:30 every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, so that we can better use the four drivers that we have. A lot of them, a lot of them have second jobs. So our drivers are available in the mornings, and that's where we're sending meals out. The number of families interested in receiving meals, either through delivery or pickup, continues to increase. We know at this point that we are still not reaching every family. We're encouraged by the fact they continue to request meals. We're looking to be able to increase that. What that does for us is that allows our bus drivers to remain active and log hours for projects. It also keeps our full cafeteria staffs at work. We've been able to do so using PPE, social distancing measures in those rough areas. And that matters. We are, we are now delivering more meals about three times a week per day of the work of the first week of school. We're at the point where we're now recruiting people to help with that effort. So I'm very encouraged by the number of receiving of the old program. I hope that that continues. Our next headache on that probably at the point when we decide it's time to come back to school, we'll have to juggle delivery, pickup, and then the school service. So that is our work is kind of goes in from that point. But like I said, I'm very, very proud of the number of those who will be able to serve at this point. If we can get better at it, and reduce the number of experts. Are there any questions on the enrollments that I can answer on top of our, our new program?
I'd like to add a comment about the sessions that happened in November. And also, you know, the students who were working. He's got obviously, I actually consider there. And so there's virtual, you know, session. So if your class almost started at 8:30, like, or 9:00, they're students. And we all, but a lot of students are not at that communication. They don't have their own access. They can go on to a parent's page and watch the same session, but it wouldn't be live. So the teachers have access, and the principal, and as well as I staff have here, to log in and see, have children log on the parent's page and watch those videos that are in the video. So we had every principal report to the principal side, and we said, look, the number of children are, they're no effort. They're not logging on to the live talk, and they're not going back and watching the videos and trying to work them. The number is very small, and stuff mentioned, a handful of students. And so that was very reduced. I thought it would be a lot larger. So that is the thing, and what we're, the flagship of the community, you know, Thursday and evening is on, as well as, I think, on Saturday.
And we realize that in a traditional setting, we have students who unfortunately show up at school every day and report their work. So I didn't actually expect that it would be the same in a virtual setting. But it's not forced. So we know that we have students who rely on school, consider themselves a part of the school community, who aren't making an effort, but are showing up without teachers. Our administrators are the Englishes and the good people. They give the participation from their students. And Mrs. Strayer said that number is a lot smaller than what we imagine it would be. There are, you know, students who stood out there who are, you know, you can do apply that pressure. That, that number's a lot smaller than what it is.
And then there were, a while, like, we had to take someone court because they were too comfortable when they were in person, so the number of employees. But if you had a question, that's fine. We're not going to have a lot of other people who can answer. Have questions to do with the enrollment and enrollment, all that.
I won't be part of that. Well, I just want to make a comment, listening to the report. And I guess we plead to our community things like, we're doing what we do on these service stations. I guess my plea to the community is be flexible along with us. As you've given the report, in particular about the program, of course, I was thinking about all the, you answered all my questions, you know, before. So I think we should keep pushing it, hoping that community understanding where we are in this process, in working hard, in trying to do that.
And you'll be a lot like that. He's got, he might share the point of operation.
Thank you. Good morning. We just want to kind of update you on a few things. Mr. Brown, we've lost my text last minute about the clean. Those you've learned are all technical. Well, I think these are two schools, also a few teachers who tried to appeal for work at the sun was. Actually, I'm going to suggest myself, I mean, maybe I'll look in a model here that leveled it out now, everything actually in bad shape at this, at this point in time. I did bring, I want to use this as a metaphor, show and fail. I thought I looked like a good question, semi-narrative. But very brave. If you want to see a couple of items that we've used, or claim, any kind of hot sauce or something that's brought to our attention, I brought a couple of items that we can look at when you get done with the electric, static, sound, spray that we're using when we build the buildings. Our 4x360 machines have arrived about a month earlier than my office works. So they're coming into play this week. We will start working on our training process next week. We'll start tripping some ways for us to use. So that also helps to, I think, prepare our students around that as well. We've got plenty of just, thank the capital to handle. The school has a, at the school, it's a custodian, we build those bars if needed. Plenty of those in stock, and we're available to hold more. We also, well, the rags, the switch-out program that we have with the clean rags, this is one of the all-precious movement. The one that does that shit's out of context, and it's really direct. And all of that stuff, the living boards, that's smoothly possible. We also have the first round of bottle fill. We have about 10 of that water cooler bottle fill that we're showing up next week. We're starting to solve them all. We've got a plan for our elementary schools. And we want to set a way to make sure each one has one. They will live in our separate spaces. Just a few little updates as far as where we're all, some operations.
And those water, we don't use sheets, or I hope this follow-up. I don't have to touch with my personal water fountain. So a lot of our things will definitely be ready by.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
No, no more. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's one of our people who re-located, who are critical of instruction, of course. You can ask some questions.
Just so you know, this summer, we had 455 teachers take advantage of the campus professional development opportunities. And these teachers that participated will receive a $100 incentive this month. Also, any teacher that created a campus page will also be given 20 certification grants. We realize that campus woodneat for all of our teachers, our students, and our family. And I just want to commend everyone. I think everyone has done an excellent job on learning how to use this tool for instruction. And I'll take this opportunity also to commend our ITR team. They have been phenomenal. They have had to learn this management tool, as well as provide professional development to the teachers, administrators, and then now provide support also to, to pay for the great job we've had by researching to the family. So with that being said, with anything that's always challenging, so as we hear feedback from the community, from our family, from our teachers, we want that commitment, that feedback that the teachers come to us, because that is the only way that we can grow and develop. And so we are real seeing that, that feedback constantly. And if it pertains particularly to one particular school or one particular teacher, we are calling that principal so we can have a conversation with that teacher who is a traditional. So with the use of campus, one of the benefits of that is our full dignity. So all of our teachers pay well, have the opportunity to utilize that resource. Again, it is just a resource. It is not a benefit. But all of our teachers have the opportunity to utilize that resource. But one thing we needed to take advantage of with our CARES fund and get a program called I C E B curriculum. And this helps our CTE courses. As you know, most of those courses are traditional and all. So this also provided an opportunity for those teachers to have that our full freedom at their fingertips so that they can push out that same type of modules and learning experiences to their students who's in the campus. So in addition, the curriculum team and Dr. Dan Moen met last week with small groups of math teachers to discuss the use of data to inform instruction. And recent research and studies have indicated that the fall perfect that the gaps in math will be significant. Therefore, we have to identify what the need for before new instruction is. And so that's the reason why he's working with our teachers on our curriculum setup. So together with Dr. Moen, teachers discussed how to use the diagnostic form of assessment to identify these instructional gaps, how to design instruction to address the gaps prior to learning these skills. Teachers also shared, and I know that we listened to, our Teachers also shared, and I know that we listened to our, Dr. Lane, he's talked about adjusted time. And we are right in time, we're right on time, if you have any comments, because we were on top of that with our diagnostic form assessment. And I commented on that, that's one of our teachers. So I'm very proud of that work. But just so you know, if you hear anything about the diagnostic form assessment. There are pretty much four to six questions that like I would ask a student to complete. And then that will give me the data, if I'm like a professor, what I need to do to teach them. So that's what we're looking at with that. It helps teachers to do about small groups, individual instruction, as well as whole group. So writing, of course, is still at the forefront of our instruction. We're continuing our work with a consultant to assist teachers with providing data instruction and writing. With a tag, we made writing, which is a trip I said, that you fill based on our data that isn't me. The online virtual instruction is occurring sequentially. As you know, that's live and asynchronous. That's recorded with a timeline. If a teacher provides synchronous lessons, here she posts the videos to cameras for the students. Like Stare mentioned before, who are not able to listen to that video or participate in that video. They're able to see another later time. We're still helping teachers understand that six point five hours of learning in person doesn't translate to that much time. Teachers are learning how to provide targeted instruction that doesn't overwhelm students' brain. Principal are encouraging collaboration between teachers to divide and conquer. To share resources and work together to light the load of teachers' student pain. We're so proud of our teachers and recognize the hard work and dedication that we have put to ensure students can receive the best possible instruction. Even in this virtual climate, teachers have found ways to build relationships through teachers' and students' pain. Working together, teachers, students and families have made what we felt would be an impossible situation possible.
I would like to add, this is known as part of that, the point that specifically she said, people call us through the system. Because sometimes parents may be calling, we've heard that. They're calling teacher, calling the principal, or why they're at school. As we've been giving students, we've been seeing those parents and grandparents in the lobby, looking at all the teachers. That they learn how to speak, they put it to everybody. So we've been so inspired by that. But also when they call up here and you can see this. And so one of the biggest things, concerns that we have heard is parents or grandparents having a hard time finding where assignments were located. And also where they get them. And so we ask all the principals to please put on the main page, they can say, where's fun, some, you're to submit that. So as this woman said, when there are concerns, we can hear those, so that we can take that. And I have to say, when she said we were right on time, I mean, I have, it is, you know, the instruction department. Because this summer, they said, hey, there's a gap in math, I would figure that out. So we're gonna make the four to five questions. So it's a short little assessment. And figure out where students are missing skills, so that we can differentiate disruption. And now the state department has come out with, hey, this school didn't ship it, so we're probably doing that. You know, very proud of our staff who are always thinking ahead and going better than, and then I actually appreciate the instruction that we've been working on our home years. And that is what virtual learning is all about. We appreciate the students and finding where they are, and getting them off where they need to be. So I appreciate the work you've launched on.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Fred.
I'm meeting with Dan, I'm sure they're working with, with small groups of teachers or large groups of teachers.
Yes, I actually like this, Durham is actually been working with Dr. Williams, and stuff like that. And lots of them come to the microphone and talk about that. That's what I was on the phone with James, my own people, and they said, probably just in time to bear in mind, state level. That the math teachers, they are so excited about it, because it's helping all the non-students. So they talk about that after, and I'm so excited, ensuring the department's all good.
Good morning. Yeah, definitely, we know the people working for a while, what we've done, we've scheduled a smaller meeting, we put our content area. Up for the high school, do the elderly teacher, and we need our district teacher. And then also then by a grade level, sixth grade math, that's a great case. During the summer, we met later, and we had a couple of teachers, first grade level, creating assessments for skill improvement. And then we met with everybody, and we came back to school and we talked, you know, how are these people responding? That they're small groups, and we're working, we're working this whole day. And there are, I would have to, I was like, no.
I think, well, I'm putting her up in there.
Yeah.
And physically there is just, yeah.
And that's, I love talking about the math expert. He actually brought the work, where she's been helping, helping the rest of the students. Saying, you know, and then he was giving me, where he was the math expert. And he also worked the M E on the side, and he also did math assessments. So he is definitely a math expert. And people across the country, Dr. Mo then, we had to schedule very early. And coming even early on, he always looked very comfortable with the playhouse students. So we appreciate Dr. Mo, he's been very good. Okay, so I know everyone has worked very hard this summer. I mean, every, every group, every department worked very hard. There's a lot of pressure, have been on the tech talent department because of our transition to new technology. And I know a lot of folks on the faculty, some of the things that are in her department are out of her control. But as I said to someone, last week, you know, we cannot manufacture computers on our end. So I know that has its other days with tech talent. Before, Mr. Chairman, the board, I'm going to provide a little bit of technology that paid. I spoke with Nathan Doery from Comcast at the request of the board of supervisors briefly. We discussed how Comcast can help our students when we have working on expansion. I provided you a couple of the amounts I would uncover to talk about. At this time, they provide internet essentials, which almost qualifies, they're internet, they're not internet. Sometimes the parents don't qualify and qualify, they have to help them deal. So between now and the end of the year, we're twenty, twenty, if families have an outstanding meal. They may still qualify for internet essentials, because they're going to let the outstanding dead be laid. They also provide free internet hotspot. Families can go to wifi dot fender dot com to find and use free hotspots. And then to begin the work on the internet expansion, I'm collecting information from schools and allowing this to get to schools. And start working with their tech team to figure out the next expansion for our digital project. Kajiks, kajiks are, first of all, my pilot that we are checking out students. At this time, we've checked out the part of the one hundred seventy-five. We have a total of three hundred and eighty-eight that were purchased by the supervisor. And we are also making them less than paid. Data is limited daily, but refreshed every month. We have firewalls in place to prevent from actors and sites that are inappropriate. Or that are not related to instruction, for instance, like we do. There's also preserved data. We can run reports to see how the Kajiks think this could be used. For families that have more than two students, they have the option to check out more than one at a time. And I will give this to you generally, if you have a mic, to look at it and say, I've got enough students, obviously. At this time, all ninth graders have been off of the device. The iPads are not here yet. Apple received a purchase order June ninth. The original shipping date is due until March third. We were assured that the final arrival date is August eighteenth. The first and fifth grade iPad is arrived by the eighteenth, but ninth grade iPad is out. We were told it was due to the keyboard case. The ninth graders make keyboard case, which is a possibility for graders then. And that the case is on that board. Last week, we received a mail saying shipping date is pushed back even farther. And we felt like this is not acceptable. We contacted managers and the shipping date is due next week. So now we are at the point where we are receiving daily update on our rep personally. And the last Thursday, we were thirteenth in the shipping queue. And of this morning, we are sixth in queue. We have always had excellent customer purchase and that will, this is due to this, and we think hard to manage for devices. Are there any questions about Comcast, that you can say? And finally, we have this package. And we can, for example, do that. And as you can see in the visual, we have for our brand, our competitive plan, distributed to pay three hundred and sixty-six, three boxes. Each of these boxes can change, which means one hundred and one hundred and fifty dollars worth of groceries. And then these items that students eat together and sell, but also things that families can make and enjoy together. We have about two thousand dollars left to spend on the brand. And I don't want to give any of that money back. So we've gone and pulled together another order for me this week, and we'll distribute those over here. Of the three hundred and sixty-six boxes already distributed, we have only distributed for families forty times. So forty families have gotten more than one box. So our distribution is unique. We had very successful nights twice throughout the course of the summer with our EBS families. Inviting them from the records for their help to purchase those, where we are at the end of the month, to come and help food. That was a underserved population that we helped. We didn't say additional contacts rather than having them go through the school. So we will do that again, or if we receive this week's sugar and grocery like wells. In addition to free boxes, we've been in a lot of time communicating with families. I'm talking through the traditional methods, like on the phone, in person. But specifically, we've got to make our hours on Facebook to do an experiment of our parent participation. Our five o'clock in the morning until about eleven thirty at night. And we try to engage the families as much as we possibly can to answer their questions. Because we know their hours aren't traditional school hours. And to also, like, to respond to that question, make sure that it's given to the right person, so that we can get them to be fully capacity properly. So we're doing a lot of that and continue to do a lot of that. One of the things that several of our team members did recently, was to participate in a campus drill with public safety. And some members of the Department of Health. They were very excited to hear about our thing. And we had then that we have issues for a diagnosed case in our home, and how we wish to see from there. I asked Beth, my headset, to be here today. I remember receiving the opportunity to meet her. But Beth is very well as one of our new members. And the vest was absent for a while this fall. And so that's our expert, on that, making sure that we're all following the protocols we need to follow. And she's answering a lot, full marks of questions for us. And we were able to get her and her leadership to help together that girl with public safety. Coming out of that group, we knew that we needed to enhance our reputation to staff members about the protocols we need to follow. So you probably saw on Tuesday, the distribution of our monthly newsletter. We also share a protocol with the staff members. So that they know what we're going to do in lots of different scenarios. We also share a letter with families to remind them how we will proceed when students return to school. If there are children in the life to take over. And certainly to remind them of our obligation and our desire to protect student information, through the V A and R B. So we share that with them, and we'll continue to do that. We are continuing to update our return to school website and sharing how to information with staff, students and families. And we are issuing a series of videos for students and families, so that they all know what to expect when they come back to school. We have a Facebook board, so that we can show that as well.
I'm so excited to go back to school. But there are some important things we need to have to get back to class. When we get to school every day, we're going to go through a special entrance and maintain our distance. It will be important to wear our mask every day. When we get inside, a grownup will take our temperature. Before we go in the classroom, we're gonna get hand tied, so we're gonna be germ free. It will be important to keep our distance when we walk up the stairs and hall. There will be dusting dots on the floor to help us keep our distance and stay safe. When we go to the classroom, we should go straight to our desk. The desks are farther apart than they used to be to help us stay safe. It will be important to wash our hands to keep everybody germ free. Can't wait to see you at school.
Once you can hear about it, then it will make it important for students to hear from their peers. But the whole team of adults, who are playing some of the videos to share with students and their families. Mr. Scott and Walter, for patients who are working on video professors, and everyone who's expected to stay alive at the bus. And we'll have some other procedural videos to share with the patients as well. Does anyone have any questions regarding communication for me, or help questions for Beth? Beth is a star of one of our videos, of how properly determine placement, all in all.
Thank you.
And I know that was a long information, but is there any other concerns or questions that you have to be thankful?
Oh.
Okay, we're gonna continue. Does anybody have any questions on the information that's been done? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, under the consent agenda, you have the approval minute for August sixth. Approval of payment for bills. Does anybody have any questions over those two items? Or do we need to shift them into the action? Move forward. So, Mr. Bradley made the motion, Mr. Jager, please say it. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, we now move on to the action agenda. Under the action agenda, the first will be the approval of the V S V A school board policy, D J small purchasing.
Again, Mr. Chairman, according effective July twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, Intercity Board of Supervisors passing purchase secrets called county schools, public service authority departments. This policy can be found on Word docs under the featured tab under Policies and Drafts. Our recommendations, if the revisions are presented as a first reading, it's recommended that the revisions to policy D J small purchasing be approved as presented. This has no fiscal impact, this is a precaution.
Anyone have any thoughts? Chairman, I believe that will be approved as soon as this is the first break.
This is the one um within the board's plan saying we're going to pay the world we can receive next month.
We'll say we accept the motion if there are second. Mr. Dr. Stan Ball may second, Baron may motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Thank you. All right, the next item is approval purchase J A M F.
The school division currently has updated MacBook Air laptops to fully develop divisions. These devices require regular apps and system updates on training and education. Jam Pro expedite the update process, publishing apps and updates without manual intervention. They force the policy and helps in distracting the cover involved at that. It's recommended that the school order for the purchase of one thousand seven hundred thirty months of license to Jam Pro from Jam software, sole source of Jam. There's official impact twenty one thousand four hundred thirty dollars that will come from the FY twenty one technology set budget. And that's our reimbursement budget.
I have a motion on the floor, Dr. Stan Ball. Second. Second. Mr. Jager, second, all those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? The next item is purchasing various equipment for Go Tech classroom.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, good evening, good morning. I'm here to talk to you about the Go Tech program, including all partners in the school. Go Tech is about empowering tomorrow's workforce. Uh, it starts with working with our middle schools. Uh, it's a program that consists of the fifty eight corridor from Academy to South Hall. And it looks at the following areas to improve student skills in advanced materials, IT cybersecurity, precision, the speed rate, robotics, automation, mechanics, welding, healthcare and career connection. It looks at early exposure to the power of Go Tech. It aligns with all seventeen plus groups in the C P E career curriculum presented by V O D. Nearly one million is waiting out after news waiting for these students to go to the program. Continue the pipeline and the power with uh Go Tech. Students will continue their exploration while transitioning uh from the middle school to the high school and only to the career academy and into V H for further in their education. They'll have opportunities to grow to learn about the different opportunities in our area as well as in other major communities. So why do we want to build this pipeline? Well, there are nearly one million jobs projected for six years past, twenty twenty six, in the Go Tech career field. And those jobs can be built by our students. It's a workforce that is changing in our community and in surrounding communities. We need to start preparing our students to start doing so with this program. So the law of our classroom space, uh, the items that I'm bringing to you today will actually finish the lab at Law Park. Uh, we have various tools that are being placed right now, a brand new classroom layout, a brand new desk, brand new flooring and lighting that are still being seen and so working and creating. It is a phenomenal space. Uh, we had a training here yesterday and the actual people who were over the Go Tech training uh said they want to do all their training at our facility for this program. So do you have any questions about Go Tech, for the Go Tech program?
Are we doing anything now that's virtual?
We are doing things virtually. Uh, the teachers are working virtually with the students uh in there. Uh, what'll happen when we get students back on our higher schools will be learning robots, uh, robot arms and things of that nature. But they're learning the basics. Uh, with that, a lot, a lot of our C P classes are doing the safety, the uh, the exposure to careers that they'll learn about in this program.
And you find that common theme that as a real first home company for all groups that will have stuff that you know is part of trying to work with the content base, um, it's possible that there are people who have to, they might require equipment to weld in their, their, any whatever job they need to do. Cause they're not the business model and welding model that they call. But this program is at Hall Park and we're very excited. This is a good appointment. Uh, here, Mrs. Milner, Mr. Miller and I serve the Go Tech meeting, I'm on the board. And uh, get that Hall Park down. We hope that the grant will expand, if it's starting by the workforce, the nation, so that we have this pipeline. Always heads on to the programs, adds to our programs. And we hope that uh the next phase will rule the grant and be on that too as well. And I'm a percent free person.
I got that one hundred percent free personally. Yes. It's the type of thing on this that comes in the way. So it's a monthly reimbursement uh that we will put in. Uh, our first reimbursement goes out on Saturday, September, and that will cover the cost of uh everything we've expended through this form. Uh, and then in October, we'll present September expenditure that we have. So this is just for the month. Pre-seeding, this, this road path.
And uh, there are a lot of things that are, I don't know, I don't know. Pretty much it's, it's one of the three hundred thousand dollars, right? So cash coverage has to be implied, which guarantees the cost of going back. Those salaries as well as you have a local, some of the securities and personal. And then another path that these targets will be covered. All of that is reimbursed at one hundred percent. And we didn't talk, since the grant was, the opportunity came through, we wanted to go to that coalition. And then they said, well, how many slots we have at this point, are we going to take that? And we said yes, but we told them we're on board with that. And that's when we had, uh, S C had currently been several inquiries and we wanted to look at our first. And we are slated at S C possibly to, you know.
Not sure, we're still embarrassed to think that's what we're in right now, but we're we're in the process of doing very much with a plan to bring, but I certainly do not have the opportunity to possibly participate with this.
And so if we did not have a block, maybe it would be something that was, you know, are you going to be a part of the Go Tech commission? But then, once we said yes and we agreed, if the entire payment has to stop and and our town, then we will follow up.
You know, I guess my definition is this, you know, pretty clearly isn't a person running an opportunity. And if there's a big question, like, I'm sure. And so that's why I'm asking about the timing of this, I have some suspicion about. You know, improving expenses for something that, you know, we may not go back, you know, for virtual for this whole year or definitely, then this will be even spent. This doesn't seem the way that we had anticipated, so I'm just wondering if this is something that potentially we can, if we have a better idea.
I think the training they talked about, I think in the training.
Yeah, so a lot of C P E is hands off. So a lot of what we're doing in our, all of our C P are hands off. So the really great thing that teachers are doing right now is they're thinking outside of the box. Somebody else is having a Zoom meeting uh next week in which they're gonna prepare food. Uh, and the students are gonna Zoom in, they're gonna practice with them, this is a good video. Um, and cybersecurity, students are coming in and working virtually on the network. Same thing will happen in Go Tech, they have an app that I have. They're gonna be able to manipulate things, to build things in the lab once we have these things in place. Uh, they'll be able to send files to the three D printers, they'll be able to send files and programs that are allowed to do different things and have a part of the project. What does it look like in virtual work? Well, right now, our Navy, they build parts while they're out in sea on three D printers. So if there's a part that goes bad, we, they have a system that they send to that Navy sub, it'll build the replacement part on the sub. And so we're teaching those kids to learn their skills. Know they're not in person, we want them to be, to learn it hands on right there, but it still gives the same skill. So there's, there's various ways we're doing it or having to learn that as we along with these kids.
Exactly what you said is what we said, we talked to the Go Tech uh all about what if, I mean, if that's the story, how that's on, of course. But what if they, you know, pretend that it'd be hired years, the money's there, they say, uh, if they can be reimbursed and it'll be there for the benefit of the people in that in that lab at the park. So we were sure that we'd be doing a bunch, so that will be that same question. Mr. Scott and I had that discussion, although we're, you know, in the ideal policy, we call it something, okay. But it will be there and we, like, twenty four, it'll take a while to get here anyway.
I'm hearing several figures bounce around here. First figure is three hundred thousand. It was a combination of a hundred and fifty thousand salaries, if I remember correctly. And then there was a hundred and fifty thousand for resources to get it scoring. But here, you're asking seventy five for a late, so.
Yeah, so seventy five for a late is what is being requested. Now finish uh the majority of our lab space, the big ticket items. Uh, the other portion of the lab, uh, we have funding, it's already been completed. And it was a one to one ratio for reimbursement, but Go Tech realized this situation, they got some concessions. And it's now a two to one, for every dollar we spend, they spend two dollars now. So it's actually a two to one, it is a total of three hundred three hundred and some five thousand dollars, but it's now like two to one ratio reimbursement. So.
We've already purchased some things, I don't have the, I'm not sure what else they've purchased.
Uh, we've already purchased uh
The oil.
The, the practice welders and, and some of the other safety items that they got have immediately had those things before we had anything else. Uh, the teacher's toolbox kit, uh, the boat building activities, a lot of the activities that they already have, this already purchased, this evening. What's the role of the board and what's the, the question? Go Tech now, and I guess my concern is, I am, is, is, do you know?
I hate trying to say that, so yeah, you could go, you know, in that, we have a pack of labs in the minimum high school. And um, it lets students, who chose, elected to go through the different uh stations to learn about, same things that Mr. Miller talked about, electronics, welding, healthcare, and our, and Mr. Bradley remembers from, let's say, the back of high school, that our students did not have a high interest in legal. And so the enrollment law, the American program, is what. So Go Tech, like with the group organization, it started from a workforce, they, we cannot fill the job in our community when they're out there, they're high paying, high skilled, the kids are not following the teaching path. Um, so they got together and said, we could do a general assembly, they were giving us money for working schools and something like this, that our reason is that we can expect from the county, um, east or town back, that part of the country. And so we agreed with the people that, yes, we still work class, we pray our students to follow these courses. So again, remember when students say choices are made, they want to be in our band from a foreign language, Go Tech program, you know, and in fact, we, we still run the whole school, the weather, our enrollment, I think they follow that. And Dr. Bing, that's a big award.
I do.
And that's our year.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I just want to kind of help you out with the numbers quickly. Uh, the grand award will provide us with one hundred and forty two thousand, four hundred and sixty seven dollars of funds that are going to be free and first. We have to match a level amount of a hundred and fifty three thousand, eight hundred and sixty four dollars. Um, Mr. Miller and this, uh, this Miller were talking about in kind funds, we talked about salaries. Out of that hundred and fifty three thousand, it'd be approximately eighty thousand dollars of that would be salaries. Uh, Mr. Scott did some work this summer, I think an approximate number there is about forty thousand. So already in any kind of the hundred and fifty three thousand, we, we have about a hundred and twenty thousand right off the top.
And so as the people get in there and they start working on things, then they'll, of course, the way that works, the principal, they request funds for different items. So one of the things that Mr. Miller did in the past spring, a career academy, is know that the career academy, all the classes are big on. So kids' teachers, Mr. Holler, Mr. Swaller and um, Mr. Bird had ideas of kids can complete things up. Because if I'm my mom and I'm trying to learn how to plant something, grow something, or picture an animal, I don't have the animal, I don't have the food, I don't have the wood, I don't have the nails. So they actually know that the career academy chooses the activities they want to do, they want, and they grow by the school and they literally pick up just, um, embers and wood. And they grow by the school and they literally took up just embers and wood. So therefore the school's supposed to be able to buy those. And of course the kids brought them back. And that's what would happen as the career academy, as GOATC paid off that whole part. And teachers said, this is what the kids can own. If they can do the same home, you know, that would be the money that would expand the value of tools. I think the healthcare will be by avoid pressure path and try to do that home, which is definitely not ideal, but.
Yeah, and there's some virtual apps that we're going to use as well. Software that we're going to have to push out as well. But there's also some things that we're going to be involved in, like the boat building activity. I thought they actually do, you know, how to make a boat out of paper and different items. It's a process of engineering that they have to study. There's various things we're going to be able to do at home, but when they get back, we're going to have a lot ready.
I understand the two-to-one we're talking about, the numbers that support.
Yeah, we'll actually be matching two-to-one ratio. I think the numbers were from the original, the original. Yeah, they've updated it to a two-to-one ratio.
So we not been a lot of money.
No, it hasn't been, it hasn't been finalized for the board, I guess, for the best cover.
Currently it is what you quote, it's what we sound like. And this has been done already in Pennsylvania County. They've been doing that for two years, out of that, I don't have.
At the county, they've already submitted their first reimbursement.
We would not do the first. So we raised the CBI, we raised the district, we did, we did first there, we did every college, second, third. And we sent Mr. Hilton and, um, we sent him at the middle school principals that he was at the county county school that they thought. And they both agreed that it was a good program and they made, they wanted to do their test, which was on three days. We did special children. And then we filmed when I started doing it to make sure that we thought it was a good program.
The most many way to get into interest is to do away with it. Do away with the program previously because of lack of interest. I was attempting to.
At this time, there's a lack of interest because they incorporated the robotics and the, all the engineering items that weren't previously used. And so, um, we had that the first thing you had to do is enter a new support. You're not allowed to admit to people unless you apply for these days. We show that there are jobs that can be filled from adding these boards. We show that we've done surveys for interns. And so we're talking about it yet. But I think it's the robotics thing that's incorporated within that's really. And a lot of our students are fair in the healthcare. I'm not sure if this is because they've always been in healthcare or this is because they're hearing everybody who's talked for years about the job. And I can't really have a great job of healthcare. So healthcare, we incorporate the impact.
And I think, you know, when we did the survey, there was something like eighty students. And the students who wanted to go and get healthcare, if that would match on what they did or what they put down the survey. The other piece is the career connection. We have to do a career connection class in middle school. And this will encompass that career connection piece. And it'll be more interactive with students. It's all new equipment. It's all updated. So I think the, the program that was at Magnavista, the middle schools and the high schools, it became pretty stagnant very quickly. It was not a foresight to see we need to keep adapting and keep updating. I think with the WA grant team forwarded this straighter part of. I think that forward thinking is there. It's looking at industry and the workforce. We have a meeting with workforce based coordinator who's going to be one of the businesses and talking with them and connecting us. Which will build the pipeline to connect the high schools to the career academy field.
And cybersecurity, I would like to take that clarify and not expand it. Cybersecurity, normally the GoATC academy, personally cybersecurity, they start at in the middle four and take the most in high school. And there's a lot of people that these have. And help the DA type of career candidates that are in our high school and you're asking them about middle schoolers, that they do the major clarity.
They're explaining behind the school.
And that's, y'all are pretty for us to be part of that. Where all the students, when they're in that class, they go on the major clarity and help to pick your goals. And show them things that are out there, that they have never done. And a lot of the jobs are in this area. That's why I think this is just now because we added, they had, and those old labs are grabbing out for technology now.
What would be the consequences? If there are, if we were to postpone this program until next month.
We just, we could just start on a volume item, play it. Because when we volume item, you know, this, I think the iPad takes time to get up there. So whenever we afford the board of friends, we'll purchase. So we can talk to everybody.
We get three more.
Sure. We'll be paying for it.
We'll move to the side of the floor. Number two. So, okay. Dr. Stanball made the motion, Mr. Zayer. Second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Are you opposed?
No.
Okay. Now, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent.
Prediction of superintendentality. Shared things happening during the first weeks of school. In the area of high quality instruction, Stanleystown students and their families participated in STEM projects for library class during the first week of virtual learning. Using paper and tape, K three students followed directions and made a square triangle to join the end for through a column. After making predictions, they tested the parts of which column holds the book. Four of the mid graders were instructed to use paper and tape to build a chair. The chair needed to hold a favorite stone toy. At Career Academy, cybersecurity class is off to a strong start with instructor Donna Hicks and her students. Who are working to solve some of life's contemporary problems. In the area of high quality professionals, three Mason teachers have been collaborating for students to stay on track with their learning goals. Teachers at Metta View Elementary have been collaborating deadly during virtual learning to provide students with engaging lessons. Teachers and staff that have known all of it have embraced the challenges of virtual learning. Students were engaged in virtual learning to use engaging opportunities such as ABC Bootcamp. Teachers also used document cameras to enhance instruction and encouraged the use of manipulators. There were virtual high fives for students to encourage participation. Rich Akers teachers are working diligently to develop relationships with students through bootcamping. During these meetings, students enjoy spending time with their teachers in class. The campus pages of teachers have responded for students to explore as well. Staff members from Rennell Mission were presented in the first of many equity chats. As the equity team reinvents itself for this school year. In the area of safe and innovative learning department, the GOATC lab at Law Park is equipped and ready for students to come explore the variety of potential careers available to them in our community. In the area of family and community engagement, Campbell Court staff sent messages to students on the first day of school to welcome them back to the school year despite its unique circumstances. Backwoodian staff at SC Middle School have worked to make the transition to all virtual as easy as possible for students and parents. Equity members have hosted Zoom meetings to present information and answer questions about the new learning platform as well as course curriculum. Parents have been able to come in to meet with teachers for technological support or EL staff for language assistance. Magnavista High School staff showed support for one of their end recently, having Martha Nader Day supporting Travis Murphy as he completes cancer treatment. As you can see, our school year has begun in an inspiring way.
Do we have any other questions you consider in this area? We have to answer them.
Are you going to do the membership report?
Well, that's what Mr. Scott, let me see. Unless you have a question around that.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're open. All right. We need to approve your report or we just?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any matters from the board?
And I didn't want to make a comment. I didn't want to make a comment on the superintendent's report. One of them never said anything for a matter. No, but I just wanted to come in and spread the vision. Uh, I participated in the faculty meeting. That's called a board matter. I'm not the board, I'm the superintendent's report. The faculty, uh, school meeting. And I did it because when I saw it, I thought, this is all about. And I was real pleased to find out what we're doing for our students when it comes to making sure that now not only equity in education as far as some of the kids are concerned, but, uh, teachers are in the process of having the conversations, the hard conversations about issues that plague our country. And to have an equity committee in every school. Again, that's done to go back to, you know, across our vision. So I was real pleased, um, to participate in that Zoom meeting. And the other thing I'd like to say is, um, you know, there's been a lot of, of course, I'm sure you guys have got a lot of questions about our virtual learning and returning to school and, you know. I was pleased to review the number of questions by the HCEA and the responses that the spread of the vision provided for HCEA. And I would say that through their questioning, I would think at least ninety-five percent, if not higher, of the questions that I've been receiving. I'm sure some of you probably have seen, have been asked. My only issue is making sure, I know representative for the region is down there. So I just say this, uh, in that I know our HCEA works hard making sure that they are getting the message out to teachers. But I just implore them to work a little harder to make sure that the teachers work with the, well, HCEA work with the principals and the teachers to get that information out. This is valuable information. I mean, they have a lot of questions, the questions and the answers. You just need to make sure that that information or that document is in the hands of the teachers. So I thank the vision for providing that, you know, information to, to our teachers. Now, that's a big issue in that, I think, a large percentage of how they feel comfortable about returning to school. And a lot of those questions were asked to build that confidence level in them. So when we get ready to return to school, we have a plan.
Mr. Zayer.
I like this canvas, by the way. I think it's great. I've worked with my grandchildren on their virtual learning. That's been really cool, you know. But I do like it. And I think it's what I've heard from a lot of teachers is it's great. And they're really hard at it. And maybe in some cases it's overworking. But I think they're doing it some per chance, but I'll encourage.
Okay, reminder, there are some dates coming up. Monday is a holiday. And October the first at six will be our monthly meeting. And November the fifth will be a monthly meeting at nine in the morning. And then of course, uh, looking way ahead is Thanksgiving vacation. So as far as other dates, you'll see them down there. And don't forget the annual convention, November the eighteenth through the twentieth. Any other questions? Okay, at this time, we're going to go or get ready to go into closed session to discuss issues two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia for discussion of appointments and separations of personnel. Two point two, three seven one one A two, Dakota, Virginia for discussion and consideration of recommendations for special placement, non-resident requests and release for compulsory attendance for religious reasons. The next one is two point two dash three seven one one A eight of the Code of Virginia for discussion of pending legal matters. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? So Mr. Zayer made the motion as her second. Dr. Stanball seconded all those. Zayer, please raise your hand. Okay, we are now in going into closed session.